Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Deputy Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Dave Abdala?
Here.
Bill Bazey?
Here.
Robert Constant?
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton?
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Here.
Ray Muscat?
Here.
Tom Wenzel?
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to ask longtime Garden City Mayor Randy Walker to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Next, we have Agenda Approval. Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve Order of Business March 13th, 2018, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as presented.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Hicks Clayton and seconded by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is Approval of the Minutes.
Ms. Chair?
Councilwoman Muscat?
I move Council to approve the minutes. Order of Business for March 13th, 2018, as submitted.
Second. Okay, that is moved by Councilwoman Muscat, seconded by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Ms. Chair?
Yes.
I don't know if this is the time that we do this or not, but there's something in the fund transfers and current claims that I'd like to have removed.
Okay.
So I don't know if this is the time and place to do that, or can we do it when that's brought up?
Should be when it's brought up.
Okay, thank you. So moved. My motion stands then.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next on the agenda, we have Public Hearings and Comment on Agenda Items. I ask that you come up, state your name, and limit it to two minutes. It's for the public.
What?
No one?
Nope.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have Fund Transfers and Current Claims.
Ms. Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move Council, um, I don't know how I'm going to do this. I want, there's Item 6.7. It's the Cummings, Bechore, Davis, and Atchell. That I'd like, I don't want to say no to all the rest of these things here, you know, 1 through 43, but I'd like to have this removed until the, most of this, almost all of it, is the contract negotiations that are going on. And my personal belief is going way too slow.
Okay.
And I think that we need to pull this off until it's done, and then they get paid when it gets done.
If I can offer a friendly way to how you'd want to make your motion, even though I'm at an agreement with them, but I'll tell you. You would move Item 6.1 through 643, with the exception of 6.7, and that's how you would do it.
It's so moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Councilman Bazey? So it's moved by Councilman Muscat and seconded by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, on just that one or on the other items?
On any.
And on any of them?
Yeah, I do have on, actually ironically, it was on the exact one. I had a question for, uh, this would be, there you go. 6.7? I didn't get the right one, I'm sorry. 6.7? It was in regards to, on there, part of the expenses for the legal was for the firing of an individual, and I had a question. I'm not sure if this would be Director Savatko would answer that. There was like three and a half hours in regards to firing, so I'm just curious. And that's how much Council charged us. And honestly, it kind of threw me off. Seemed like a long time to fire somebody. So I was wondering if you could give us a little bit in on that? Okay, I'll have to repeat it.
I think this, this is, you'd be better off-
Big in a closed session.
Yeah, in a closed session.
Close session. Close session, because it's state law.
No, I don't need to know the whos.
Okay.
No, it wasn't in regards to who and why.
It's the amount of time.
Just the amount of time it took.
Want to remove that from the agenda?
Okay, I'll move that from the agenda until closed session.
I have some questions also. Item 634, um, I'm looking at the amount of $24,866, and I can see where some of the money's coming from, but there's, um, $13,363.55 here. I don't know what this is for here, or where it's at, unless it's the same thing as the previous page here.
It's your bill, Mr. Brooks, 634.
$13,363.55 is just giving me, it's a project number. I don't know what that project number is and where all of this is taking place.
That's the design of the current project, which is Silverland Lane from Ford Road to Warren, and then George Avenue here from Telegraph to Fenton.
Okay, thank you. And then one more here. The Taylor Basin Improvement Project for, uh, 638. How did, you know, the Taylor Basin Improvement, is that part of the whole sewer system that helps us, or what is that?
Do you want to answer that, or we're talking the Pelham Basin, which is currently by-
That would be the repair, I think.
Yeah.
Get an annual bill for the repair.
Repair of-
Centurion.
It was when they had the collapsed wall about four or five years ago. You're paying a 10-year, I think a 10-year note on that.
And that directly affects our water flow, our sewage flow that goes down to the wing, the wastewater pipeline I visited today. Thank you, I wasn't aware of that. I appreciate it, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
She was first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not really questioning the billing, but in general, 611, Chief Brogan. And I've noticed the nylon stretcher cot straps, certainly a need because they wear out, but my question is more, are you budgeting for the purchase of new striker cots? The need, because certainly those get older and they need to be replaced.
Yeah, we actually just got some with the grant. We got three new, uh, striker cots, but they're motorized ones.
Alright, thank you.
Chief, since you're up there? Go ahead, if you don't mind. I had a question on 6.1, and just for clarification for me, the amount on there is $7,173.12, but on the back of it, the price was a 6.50. I'm just curious what that specifically represents, because the quantity was 110,000.
Yeah, it's a percentage. That's our income from the EMS revenue, and they keep 6.5% of what's collected from EMS. That comes out to a $7,000 number.
I got you. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Bazey?
Okay, 6.5. You have $54,759.4. There's two different invoices. One, I'm not really sure why, there is January 2018 administration and operating cost of $8,408, and there's two different invoices. The other one is $45,667,94. I don't know why they're, why they charging administration fees.
Want me to answer that?
This Central Wayne County Sanitation, our treasurer serves as our delegate on the alternate, but John would be very qualified to answer your question.
As you can see on the invoices, the $45,000 is the disposal of our household waste at the, with Central Wayne. We have a contract Waste Management, Central Wayne does, that we pass through Central Wayne. And then the administration operating charge, we have an ash monofill. When we used to have a incinerator in Dearborn Heights, or the whole Central Wayne did, we have a, we used to store that ash underground, and so we have a landfill with ash that we have to maintain for 30 years, along with the employees' costs for their pensions and healthcare for those that used to work for the sanitation authority when we were operating the incinerator years back. So that's what adds up to the administration cost. Plus, we have two employees that, and we have monthly meetings, and we operate the authority through that. So that's the communities of Westland, Wayne, Inster, Garden City, and Dearborn Heights. And that, they, all those five communities make up the authority.
Thank you. Second question, actually, we already talked about, for 638, the one that Ray just brought up, it still doesn't really say like exactly what was done, so I'm kind of curious for the $148,000. I know, but was, is there-
The basin collapse, the wall, there was so much quantity that went in it that it actually pushed the wall out, so that had to be all reconstructed. It is a drainage district monitored by Wayne County, so there are, I believe, three people who served on that drainage district, none of which can be anybody from Taylor or Dearborn Heights. So they authorized the payment to get it fixed, and they bonded for it, now we're paying off the bonds. So they made the decision and they give us the bill. This is very important for the South End because it stores some of that capacity, but it was this accident that took place. It got redone, and then the wall got pushed out, and it was out of service for a while. But there really isn't a whole lot of objection that we can do at this point.
Mayor, is that our sole responsibility, or is that divided between other communities?
It's, uh, so, it's a responsibility of-
Wait a minute. Let the record show that we stopped the meeting to fix the camera. Now we're continuing. Go ahead.
Good idea.
Okay, on the Taylor Basin, Dearborn Heights is approximately one, two-thirds of the cost. Taylor's one-third, and Wayne County and MDOT have a small percentage of the cost, like one or 2%. It's based basically on land area. If you look at the district, Dearborn Heights is about two-thirds, Taylor's one-third.
That's the basin at Pelham and-
That's at Pelham and-
Yep. I remember when it happened, and the road there, there's a dip flood, and it was flooded for a while.
I think that had something to do with our flood in 214, didn't it? The capacity couldn't go through there?
It contributed to it, you're correct.
Is there any other discussion?
I have a question for Chief.
Councilman Wenzel?
Um, you, you mentioned the EMS money. What is that?
That's the revenue from our rescue squads.
How do you get, how do you get revenue from that?
We build insurance companies. There's a bill for, we have a standard rate that are set by Blue Cross and Blue Shield and Medicare, and we bring that to the council every year, and we collect through mostly insurance company, Medicare is our two biggest payers.
And we get a percentage of that?
Yeah, we bring in over a million dollars with our EMS runs.
Keep up the good work.
Yep.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, with the exception of the ones that we've removed, which were-
6, 6.7?
And was it 6.34?
It was 6.7. 6.34.
Okay. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next on the agenda, we have reports from the mayor. Appointment from Mayor Pelleco, appointment to the Commission on Aging.
Ms. Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I'm going to make the motion first. I move City Council concur with Mayor Dan Pelleco in appointing Denise Malinowski Maxwell to the Commission on Aging as a City Council Liaison to the Commission for the term ending December 2020, as outlined in 8A.
Second.
You did it perfect.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Ms. Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Is this one of the council appointments?
No.
Because I'm understanding that we have two appointments for the council, and there's people that are there now that their commissions haven't been, haven't been up, their terms haven't been re-upped, and I was wondering why they haven't, since they're still meeting. And I, you know, I've sat in some of those meetings, and they're doing a pretty good job.
To answer, I have a meeting with the chairperson next week, and Ken Gribble, and also Mr. Nagy is going to join us, and we're going to talk about, and so on the next agenda, you should see people getting appointed. And I was waiting for that particular discussion. Can't think of his last name, but Bill, is it Bill the first?
Barfuchere, I think.
Yeah, and so he's going to meet with me in the next week.
But if it's a city council liaison, shouldn't that come from the city council?
No, I'll have Mr. Miyake answer that, but all appointments to commission in our charter are mayoral. That liaison person is not a voting person, but a person that may attend and only voice, as I understand it, correct?
That's what a liaison should be. Yeah, the, the Section 2553 said that there are seven members. The appointments shall be made by mayor, however, two members will be nominated by the senior citizens council, two members will be nominated by the city council, three members will be nominated by the mayor, but still, the mayor is the one who ends up making the appointments.
So if I said Rose Perpepe, for instance, okay, you'd still have to concur with it, in other words?
Well, I think how it would flow is if council members would like to make a recommendation to me, I certainly, that would be how it would flow.
I wasn't sure, because there, you know, I thought that council had something to be able to pick on this. I wasn't sure.
Well, if I, if I may, this was something that the mayor and Parks and Recreation Director called me about this afternoon, and had a question, and so I did a little research. Section 5.15 of the Charter, Sub A, says, "Except as provided in this charter, all department heads and members of the commissions and boards of the city government, whether the same be established by this charter or by an act of council, shall be appointed by the mayor." So essentially, unless a state statute basically overrides it, or there's something that says something different.
What did it say about the council there, or acts by the council?
Or act by the council. In other words, the council can create departments, and has in the past. For example, the Department of Ordinance Enforcement, but the appointments are still mayoral appointments.
Yeah, I just wanted to get a clarification on this.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, again, Section 5.15A. So in this situation, there's a concern about that. The other thing that we need to take into account is Section 4.13, which basically says no elective officer shall hold more than one elective or appointive office. And all the elected officials, the mayor, the clerk, the treasurer, and the city council members are the elective officers, but people who are appointed to commissions and boards are appointed office. So essentially, that would say that you can't actually be a member of a council and serve on a board or commission unless there's something that's outside the charter or supersedes the charter, say, for example, state law that says someone can end up being, serving in that capacity.
That's the problem we had with the compensation commission, when we had people that were actually employed or elected and couldn't serve.
Similar, yeah. So, yeah, that's, so that's what I thought.
Is there any further discussion?
I guess he does.
Could you step up? Okay, again, I'll ask, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and motion is carried. Next on the agenda is also reports from the mayor. Appointment to the Recreation Commission.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdala?
I move that our council concur with Mayor Dan Pelleco to recommend Bilal Aiman of 21661 Beechcrest be appointed to the Recreation Commission. Mr. Aiman currently serves as the Director of Operations for Hype Athletics, and this appointment would be to replace Councilman Tom Wenzel, who is no longer eligible to serve on the commission due to currently serving on the city council. Mr. Aiman's term would end September 2021, as outlined on Item 8B.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion?
Um, Madam Chair? Mr. Aiman is here, and I think most of you probably know him, but if not, does a lot of great work for the community and his involvement in recreation. Think he'd be a good choice.
Okay.
Madam Chair? I've known Mr. Aiman for years and years and years, and very upstanding citizen in the community, very, very involved, does a lot of volunteering, and loves recreation, that's for sure. One of the, I think you were one of the founding members of Hype, aren't you?
Yeah.
Yeah. So very involved in the Recreation Department. I think he'd be a perfect fit for this position.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next is also-
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
Glad to hear it.
Next, we have reports from the mayor again, for St. Sebastian Parish at 2018 Spring Festival Parade.
Madam Chair? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Councilman Wenzel?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to agree with Mayor Dan Pelleco and give permission to the great parish of St. Sebastian Catholic Church to hold their annual 2008 Spring Festival Parade on Saturday, May 19th, at 11:00 AM.
Support.
Okay. Councilman Constant supports it. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next on the agenda is reports from city officials. We have from Treasurer O'Reilly, purchase and payment of a Cronica Minolta Biz Hub copier fax kit.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move council authorize the treasurer's office to purchase a fax kit from Cronica for $424.50. It's outlined in 9A.
Seconded by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next on the agenda is from Administrative Assistant Laslow, contract for abatement, demolition, and restoration of 23440 and 23450, and also 23520 Hanover.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move the city council approve the attached contract for the abatement and demolition of the structures and restoration of the properties at 23440, 23450, 23520 Hanover, in the amount not to exceed $39,230, and authorize payment upon successful completion, as outlined in 9B.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Abdala. Any discussion?
Ms. Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I know we've used McMillan, and they've done a pretty good job on the other stuff, but have we tried to go out to see if we can get anything any cheaper since we started all of this?
Miss, Laslow is ill, and is not here, so I-
I'm going to assume that they're going to be-
They came in a lot lower than the other-
There was multiple bids.
Yeah, and all this is reviewed by the state police, who administer it, so I'm sure we're required to follow all the bidding rules.
I have no objection. I just didn't know if we had gone out to see if anything more, but if it's going to be in line with all the rest of the houses, I'm sure it's going to be good.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Bazey?
Also, one of my questions was, I see here, the last bid was in a few years ago. Also, is there a cap? I know we have an amount over here for each house, so is there a cap to how much they can exceed? I know this is a budget, but we've seen in the past that they even say, well, there's something else.
Like abatement issues and stuff?
Yeah, the asbestos or something. Did they inspect this facility or these houses, say that there's not additional money required?
That I do know the answer to, and they did go out and look at it, so we're not anticipating any addendums to this.
I believe we ran into that.
Yeah, one had.
They found the garage floor.
They found some asbestos on one of them.
It was a couple, it was a couple thousand dollars more.
But I was just, I think it was only one out of like-
Yeah, that was a very, when we first started.
Yeah, a couple years back.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next on the agenda is from Public Service Administrator Zimmer, HydroCorp Cross Connection Control Service Agreement Extension. Councilman Muscat?
I move council agree with Director Bill Zimmer, William Zimmer, to extend the HydroCorp services for testing of backflow devices, as outlined in 9C.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Constant. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I know this is an extension of the current service agreement, and it's without cost increase. My question is, are you looking at shopping this around, seeing what competitive bidding would be on this type of service?
Yes, actually, several other surrounding communities have gone out to bid on the mitten system, and HydroCorp did win the, win the bid on those. Some of the surrounding communities that are serviced by them right now, Romulus, Garden City, Canton, Allen Park, Livonia, Inster, Westland, Plymouth, Lincoln Park.
Thank you.
I believe a lot of major corporations use them to-
Councilman Bazey, did you still have a question? Okay.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Wenzel?
Director Zimmer, can you, can you give us a brief description on what these are and kind of where they're located?
These devices are located on the water inlet to businesses, apartment buildings, actually, I expect to see it in the homes fairly soon, but these are backflow devices so that any problems with your plumbing internally, the water is now not allowed to wash back into the supply system, so it limits the possibility of contaminants.
Are they purchased or maintained by the owners of the business, or by the city?
They're purchased by the owners and installed by the, by the owners, but they are inspected, and they, some of them are required to be inspected annually, some are biannually, but all the city buildings as well are required to have these. It's a requirement MDQ.
So you're saying that this would, this would eliminate sewer water from backing up into people's homes or businesses, correct?
Well, no, to backflow into the water supply system.
Just the opposite.
Yeah, siphon. In other words, if you pulled up your laundry tub, and you had a hose in there, it'd actually siphon back out full of soap and get back into someone's drinking water. That's, that's right, and you should have them on your outside hose bibs as well, laundry, stuff like that. That's, that's what that device is.
Part of the code requirements anyways.
It is, yeah.
Vacuum breaker, yes.
Or sprinkler system, something like that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, okay. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next on the agenda is from Public Service Administrator Zimmer, purchase and payment of 2018 Ford F-550 4x2 dump trucks.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdala?
I move that we concur with DPW Director William Zimmer. We received a quote for the purchase of 2018 Ford F-550 F times 2 dump truck from Signature Ford for $61,523, for a total of $123,004.6, for two trucks. And this pricing is from McComb County contract bid price, which is slightly lower than the state contract pricing, and this is as outlined on Item 90.
Seconded by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Ms. Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
All I want to know is, they make these in four-wheel drive, so we can maybe hook a snowplow to them too when we need them, if we could have just paid a little bit extra for four-wheel drive.
for four-wheel drive.
These will also be outfitted with front end plows.
Even with two-wheel drive?
Yeah, oh yeah, no, they're workhorses.
Okay, so that was my only comment, I wanted snowplows.
Any further discussion?
I remember.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is carried. Next on the agenda is from Public Service Administrator Zimmer, purchase and payment of one 2018 Freightliner tandem axle dump truck. Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I move to concur with William, Director William Zimmer and approve the purchase of a 2018 Freightliner tandem axle dump truck from Wolverine Freightliner. The cost is $173, excuse me, $173,597. That's getting a good bargain, see that? As outlined in Item 9E.
Second.
Supported by Councilman Abdallah.
We got an old one, what are we doing with the old one?
Most of them are scrap.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just saying, we're gonna get maybe a couple pennies for it, aren't we?
To be honest with you, they don't even wanna deal with them. We do have some in the yard that will scavenge for parts and actually I think one of these vendors will actually take some of our, our old equipment. I'll be coming back to the council for approval.
Yeah, I seen those trucks and they're, they're long in the tooth.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda, we have ordinances and resolutions. First reading of proposed ordinance number H-18-03, providing for more effective enforcement of motor carrier regulations and other traffic regulations.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constance?
Concur with our Corporation Council Gary Miyaki and Mayor Pletko and have the first reading of proposed ordinance H-18-03 and have it considered read for the first time.
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Muscat?
I was reading a lot of reading and it looks like basically pretty much state, state laws and...
A lot of it is taking, there's one part of it that is taking state legal provisions and updating a bunch of our provisions that have anything to do with motor carrier enforcement. And then there's a bunch of it that's brand new that we haven't had in our code and I still need to spend a fair amount of time with the police department going over this, but you can see it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, it is, and I just try to highlight some of the things that I saw right here, like the commercial vehicle and commercial motor vehicle. Now, are we talking about even these commercial vehicles that people have for servicing air conditioning, people that, a vehicle that somebody may own for a construction company, a dump truck that are in our city?
I think it might be better for the chief to end up answering.
Mr. Ray, we'll have to check on that, I don't know for sure. I know a lot of these were pertaining to the big commercial vehicles that were driving down our roads. I'll have to see how this adjusts. I know what you're talking about, let it be a commercial van that someone runs a business out of their home, that, I'll have to see with this if it pertains to those. But it's met for the big vehicles, the big heavy and, you know, trucks, that right now not, the fines are going to the state. Here, the fines will go to us, but I'll check with him in regards to some of those commercial vehicles in the residential area.
Because a lot of those trucks are carrying refrigerants, which is a, you know, could be a hazard to the community and they're all over the city, I mean...
And maybe wait, you know, in the summer you'll see some that are cement type, stake trucks with all the wood on them and, you know, cement tools and that, so we'll check.
I see a lot of these commercial vehicles going down the street after it's snowed heaven and they're not cleaning the vehicle off at all and they're just going down the street, blowing snow everywhere and I don't see how they can even see out of their mirrors or out of the back.
Yeah, I will check with Mr. Miyaki and see what pertains to our residential area.
On all the rest of those commercial vehicles that are, are carrying hazardous material.
If I might, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we send like four, five, six officers to school to learn how to administer this?
Motor carrier school through the state of Michigan to learn, yeah.
So we'll be ready and they'll be up on the rules and what I think Mr. Miyaki has written here parallels the state, so we should, we should be right.
Are we be able to put, have like the weights, put them up on weights and see if they're overweight now?
Yes.
The scales, yes.
That's kinda what this is about, right?
That's, that's a good part of it, because those are the very substantial things that cause problems.
Like the state does the weight measures.
So we'll be able to purchase those if we don't have them and...
We have to, we have some, we'll have to see if they're still within scale, you know, we have to get them certified by the state, so we'll check on that, if not, we'll look at some new ones.
Perfect, thank you.
Some of these fines go like 15,000, 20,000.
Oh, yeah.
They are not small fines and right now when our officers write it, all that money's going to the state of Michigan and we'd like to keep some of it home.
Under city ordinance.
Oh, absolutely. Is there any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
I don't know if the chief or Mr. McIntyre can answer this, but he saw, I see, I mean, in the front it mentions the ordinance or what's changing, maybe this is for the council. Is that a good idea for, in the paragraphs, to actually annotate to see what was changed or what was added? Because right now for new law enforcement or for current law enforcement officers or the ordinance department, they would have to read the whole thing to see what was actually changed.
We don't have this ordinance, so it's brand new.
It's brand new?
Yeah, so the whole thing is incorporated into our code section.
If I may correct, there are several sections, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12 sections that are being amended. They already exist, but essentially what they're doing is they're being changed to parrot state law, all right? And then there are many more sections here that are brand new, so they would be able to see, and I've, the way that I've ended up doing this is to separate them out so that if they have the ordinance, they'll be able to say what's new and what's not new and that I think it'll be more helpful. I'm still gonna be meeting again, we ended up having a meeting before with four representatives of the police department and it was a very good meeting and we'll go over this and refine them and hoping for the second reading, the next meeting is the game plan, so.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is carried. Next on the agenda, we have new business. We have the business license renewals for La Marina Auto Sales, 8230 North Telegraph and then Polish Legion of American Veterans, number 16 at 25222 Warren Avenue.
Can we take both of these together?
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
I move council approve the business licenses for La Marra Auto Sales and the Polish American Vets, number 16, as outlined in 13A.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is carried. Next we have on the agenda, permanent traffic control device, number T-267 Yield Sign, eastbound Sheridan Travel Lane at Sherborne. Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I move to approve the permanent traffic control device, T-267 Yield Sign. This is eastbound Sheridan Travel Lane at Sherborne, as submitted in 13B.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I just wish to thank the residents, this was the result of several residents and their engagement and being involved and contacting their city council members, so I wanna thank those residents and also thank Corporal Proshadlow as well and Chief Gavin for your efforts. I know the corporal went right out and followed up on that promptly and that was important for everyone's safety, so I do wanna express gratitude. Thank you.
Miss Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
If you didn't pick the stop sign for that, I mean, I travel that on a daily basis and it does get a hairy intersection there.
Concerns of the residents in Dearborn Heights and that's your prime concern, of course it's mine, but I want you to take a good look at the big picture and see that the roads are absolutely horrendous all over Wayne County and, and southeastern Michigan and, you know, the northern part of the state isn't nearly as bad, because they don't have the traffic that we have and they don't have the, you know, the overweight trucks and all the other problems that we have. So anyways, I just wanted to give you that so that you get, you've got an idea of what the good, the big picture looks like and then I also want to reinforce the 1-888 Road Crew report line. And last time I was here, Councilman Wensel asked me a question about how long do they have to turn it around before they're liable? So, when I told you 24 hours and then I thought about it and I said, no, that can't be right. The 24-hour number is how long they have, if you don't get them live, normally you'll get them live. If you call 1-888-ROAD CREW, sometimes you're gonna have to wait a long time, because right now they're, people are calling them in like crazy. Lisa, my assistant, has called them in for me, like Commissioner, Councilman Muscat called one in to me, I called it in to Lisa, asked her to call it in. She told me there was like 24 people out of her in the line. So, that's because of that roadmap, they're bad everywhere. So, but they've got, they've got 24 hours to take your call, they have 31 days to fix it before they're liable per our commission council, so, and risk management folks, so I just wanna let you know. But if it is reported, it is really important to report it to the 1-888-ROAD CREW, because that way, especially like with the people on Beach Daily that live right on Beach Daily, and though I just traveled Beach Daily and I mean, it's, it's, you know, a constant bumpy, bumpy, bumpy other way, but it's the big dangerous potholes have been filled and, and they're keeping up on them. I mean, I think I've seen them out there at least 10 times this season, but unfortunately the life expectancy of cold patch is short, especially with this crazy weather that we're having this winter where it's, you know, it's 60, then it's 20 and then it rains and it snows and it's, so it's been kinda nuts, it makes it even harder for it to, for, you know, for them to keep the cold patch in there. The expansion and contraction and then the rain washes it right out, so that's what's kinda going on right now and, and if people complain about them not filling the potholes all the way up, they're really rationing it, you know, the asphalt companies are closed until mid-April, so I don't, I don't know if you all knew that, but they don't manufacture asphalt all year round. They're closed from November to April, so, so they have to just make them so they're not dangerous, so you can't just take your tire off in them and so that's, that's what's going on right now. So I just wanted to answer your question correctly and provide you guys with that map and, and to ask people again to continue to call the Road Crew number. What I've got them doing now is putting together kind of a trend analysis to see where they're getting the most calls, because I want them to quantify the cost of repairs and at what point isn't it, is it less expensive to just go fix it? You know what I'm saying? Fix it, right. How many times are you gonna pay the man-hours to go out there and put a Band-Aid on it and by time you, by that time you could've paid for it, you know, resurfacing it? So, we're taking a look at that. So I wanted to let you know that I got your update, Councilman, and I will get on that and I'll let you know.
I appreciate that, I was gonna tell you, I appreciate you taking my call, calling me back, trying to get it expedited, but again, there's thousands of miles of roads here and, you know, what do you do? Seriously, what do you do?
I just keep...
Money's not coming in from where it's supposed to be coming in. I think we need to hold Lansing more accountable and basically that's probably what it is, it's Lansing.
It really is.
And it's unfortunate, but here we go.
It is, but we'll, we'll keep fighting the good fight, I mean, it's a David and Goliath story for me, but I mean, we'll keep fighting the good fight.
And you're doing a good job, I know you're there, because when I call you, you're on the spot, on a job and there's only so much you can do.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Commissioner, a follow-up on that question?
Yes.
Say if I hit a pothole and I damaged my rim?
Mm-hmm.
And I, how do I know if the 30 days, if someone had reported that hole 30 days ago so I can make a claim?
Sure.
And what would be, what would be the procedure?
Well, you know, there is a claim, you can go on our website and, and get claim information and, and contact them and if you ever have any problems going through that process, you can call my office and we'll help you through that process. And then it's all, that's the beauty of the report, once it's all in there, it's time-stamped, so, you know, they do a, you know, they just do a search on the location and it will cross-reference the number and the timestamp of when it was recorded, so that is all electronic, that's, that's why it's important to give an assist.
And on that note, Mr. Zimmer, thank you, your crew does a great job when we call it in, they come right out, rain, out there in the rain, filling up them holes and I, I thank you and thank your crew.
Thank you, and I wanna echo that too. Anytime I have to work with Bill Zimmer, he's, one phone call and he's on it, so he's awesome. So, then I got Councilman, I keep calling to call you guys commissioners, Councilman, Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton, you contacted me about traffic signals, left-hand turn signals down Van Born and Monroe and Beach Daily. So, that is a, a much bigger process, it requires a traffic study. I don't know if there's been one done there, but I can look into it, if it's been requested in the past, are you aware of if it's been requested in the past?
I understand it was requested a few years back.
Okay.
It was brought to my attention and I just wanted to put it in your court to see if there's any follow-up or progress on that.
Okay, very good, so I will take a look and see if there's been a traffic study on it and, and see what it takes to have one done. I know they've been trying to get a turn signal, they just got one at Cherry Hill and Inxter and I mean, it's short of an act of God to get a traffic signal, I am sorry, but it's been my experience, Redford's been trying to get one at Inxter and Six Mile for a decade, so it, it takes a lot of the criteria to, to actually get one, the traffic load and all of that, it's tough. So, but anyway, I will report back to you on that while I'm up here, any other questions?
Just one question, I and, if I, if I might, the city clerk, Mr. Prochevitz, noticed this too, but it looked to us that the people filling the potholes were private contractors, they were not in orange Wayne County trucks and some of the vests and things, it didn't indicate that, like, our city workers and county workers are very aware of OSHA laws.
Right.
And so they're, they're kinda, they got the proper vests and everything, but it looked like the county was using private contractors to fill these potholes, at least what I saw on Joy Road.
And Beach Hill was private.
And Beach Daily too.
Well, they're 123 people short in their DPS department, you know, we have 550 vacancies in Wayne County, job vacancies, 170 in the Sheriff's Department, 123 in public services and the rest are scattered throughout the county. So, with the state of urgency out there, you know, this is the worst year for potholes I have ever seen and I wouldn't be surprised at all that they weren't enlisting contractors, but my concern is, not that I don't want those potholes fixed, but I certainly don't recall approving a contractor for them. I don't, I don't remember the contract for them coming before my committee, so, so you can bet you I'll be looking into that first thing anymore.
The other thing I wanted to do, next Tuesday, the council's gonna get a presentation on the wastewater treatment plant in Wyandotte, you certainly are more than welcome to come, I think it's 7:15 or 7:20 in this room, but we'll be, the council went on a tour of the treatment plant, most of them attended both Saturday or Tuesday, and we'll be having engineers and others and giving a full update on that. I know eventually that'll come before the commission, but you'll at least get a good idea of our perception of what needs to be done in connection to making that transfer take place, so you're more than invited if you want.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor, I appreciate it. What were the dates again?
It would be next Tuesday and I think it's 7:15 or...
7:15, yes.
7:15 and then you're getting it from the 13 community standpoint as to why, but we'll also go into why it's been taking so long. We talked about the golf course, I thought this transfer was gonna happen like last year and so nothing happens quick.
Not in Wayne County. Okay, so next Tuesday at 7:15.
Yep.
I will do everything I can.
If you can, but I mean...
I will, I will do everything I can to be there.
It's not essential, but it would give you a good idea and I know that you, Commissioner Bass and a few others always ask me what's the status of it, so...
Oh, yeah, we've been on it and, and I've toured the plant before, you know, I chaired the committee that, that has it, you know, deals with all the wastewater treatment plant issues, so I've been through the tour and I know how important it is to this community, so I have been trying to keep up on it, so definitely, I mean, I, I, as long as I'm not committed to somebody already and I don't have my calendar in front of me, but if it's not something I absolutely can't get out of, otherwise I will be here.
Suggest not to take a tour during the summer when it's hot and steamy.
Yeah, it's nasty, I know, I've been there, it was summer when I was there, it was pretty bad. It was pretty bad, but you know, it's a necessary evil.
Oh, God.
Okay, so I appreciate that very much, Mayor. Any other, any other issues for me? Any other, any other issues for me? Yes? Councilman Bazey, through the chair.
It is, I mean, going back to the roads, it's ridiculous. I've been, I've been in over, I mean, I've traveled probably half the world with the military, and this is probably the worst I've ever seen. Even, we consider some places third country. Actually, this area is third country compared to some of the places I've been to with the roads. And, you know, we keep getting complaints day in and day out, especially, I mean, people can't afford, you know, brand-new tires, you know, every time they get a blowout, and they're not going to get to the process. And I understand, you know, our taxes keeps going up, you know, for state tax, you know, for the roads. And according to the county, you know, they're not getting that portion of the money back from the state.
It's, it's Public Act 51, it's gas tax. It funds it.
The gas tax, yeah, but, I mean, is there a way that the county can get some of it back? I mean, you know, we're paying it to the state, but there's no way that the county can get it back, so we can, or maybe hold some of the money somehow, I mean, some type of tax that goes to the state, hold it, so we can fix our roads?
That sounds like a great idea, and we would, we'd have a hundred percent vote on that, but we can't do that.
Do that's gross.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, right? No, you know, I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, really, you're preaching to the choir. I couldn't agree with you more. And I, I think that, that everybody on your board would agree with you, and I know everybody on my board would agree with you, but it is strictly a state legislature allocation. Back to what, what Council Muscat said, you know, if they don't prioritize, that hundred and seventy-five million was, was their contribution to additional funds. I mean, their original plan fell short, and so, this was like a stimulus. This was like, oh, we're going to do this right now, like they're doing this great thing in an election year. That is a pittance. Divide six point four million, you know, it costs a million dollars a mile to replace a road. So, six point four million dollars on that map I just showed you, it's a drop in a bucket. Divided by forty-three communities, it's less than a couple hundred thousand dollars a community.
You'll be lucky to buy the asphalt to fill the potholes.
That's exactly right. So, it's really, really ridiculous, but no, you're absolutely right. I would say, you know, and your state senator is doing a fantastic job to fight for that. It's, it's on the other side of the aisle. I mean, I don't want to get into partisan politics, but that's what runs Lansing, and it's, it's not for a lack of your representatives in this community trying, because they are. So, they've been a voice, you know, but they're radically outnumbered up there, and both in the Senate and the House. So, that's just, it's not a priority. I, I don't know, I don't know how you can lose economic development like Amazon and all these other places, you know, due to the loss, you know, to, to the roads, the condition of the roadways here, and not take it seriously. But, they're not, and then they pork value the money, they spend it on other things. So, I couldn't agree with you more. Trust me, I'm, I'm the whipping post. I'm the, I'm the chair of that committee. You don't think that I've been screaming, screaming that song since I started? But, if we don't have the money from the state, there's nothing we can do. I mean, just empty pockets. So, we do the best we can to put out, you know, just to try to keep them safe from people not, you know, get hurt, but that's why we keep telling you to call the Road Crew number, so they can at least try to keep them safe until the, they start, you know, replacing them. But it's long and slow. Your two are on the, your two worst ones, though, are on the list. They finally made the list. You know, I think it's going to take a couple of years before Beach Daily gets done, and it'll probably take a year after that before Joy gets done.
You have to listen to it.
No, we'll just keep fighting. I mean, that's all we can do, but, you know, it's, it's over our heads, okay? Thank you so much. Any other questions that you think of later, feel free to contact me, you know, a phone call away. Thank you. Have a good night.
Any other announcements from the audience?
Speaking of roadwork, Mr. Brooks and I met with M.D. this morning for a pre-construction meeting. The Ford Road resurfacing project is going to start April ninth. It goes from Inkster to Vernon. It's going to be pretty invasive. It's going to be, it's going to be a big hassle for a lot of our residents, because, as you know, you have the shopping center over there. A lot of the work is going to be performed at night. So, but some, there will be periodic lane closures during the day as well. So, I'm going to put, when I get more detailed information, I'm going to put it on the website, so make sure that you check the website for updated information. Plus, I'll try to put our upcoming projects on there as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know you have a start date April ninth. Is there an end date? Did M.D. provide that as well?
Start date April ninth, projected to complete end of June.
All right, thank you.
Any other announcements?
My name is Preston Peterson. I'm with State Representative Jewel Jones. I share the commissioner's frustration. You know, we, the whole road discussion came up, when it came up in the budget, we were pushing hard to, to get the state to, to delve into the rainy day fund as a way to get additional money to devote to repairing the roads, and the governor and the Republicans really pushed back hard on that. But that's a huge problem that's recognized across the state, that something needs to be done about it. And, and frankly, you know, the push hasn't stopped. The supplemental was important, getting that hundred and seventy-five million, but as far as continuing to fight to try to get additional funding, the Democratic Party is definitely trying to push to, to get more support. I just had a couple of things, I know it's getting late, and people want to get out of here. This is sunshine week in the legislature, and what that means is, you know, there's a real emphasis on transparency in government. One of the things we're pushing for is the executive offices to, the governor and the other executives to share their salary information and any other kind of compensation they receive. And there's actually a bill that we're proposing that, that would allow that to happen. Also, this is reading month, and so, the rep will be going around to local schools and readings to the kids. We've already got some, some visits scheduled in Dearborn Heights, and hopefully, if you're interested in having someone visit a local school, please don't hesitate to contact our office. The only other thing I wanted to mention is that the budget is in, is being, you know, developed as we speak. It's really important that we get community input on items that are important. Things like this road allocation is absolutely essential. We need to hear your voices. You know, the committee chair is Laura Cox from Livonia. She's the chair of the appropriations committee. There are a number of subcommittees that deal with different aspects of the budget, but clearly, this is an area where there needs to be some emphasis. So, please don't hesitate to contact us. We'd be more than happy to, to help in any way we can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other announcements from the audience?
I have a resident concern. May I share it now?
Okay, public comments. During public comment, I ask that you state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Fawaz, and my address is 800 Dover in Dearborn Heights. I have a concern about a wood-burning stove that I have in my garage for about four to five years now, and after a neighbor's complaints, it was brought up to my attention that I need to come to the city and pull a permit. With me, I have a permit that says wood-burning stove in the garage. So, when the gentleman or the inspector comes out, immediately, he says, "Whoa, whoa, we can't have this." So, I pulled the permit, and I tell him the permit says wood-burning stove in the garage, which was pulled right here. Unfortunately, you know, he said, "Not approved." So, I come to the city to try to raise my concern to the leadership of the city, which is one of the concerns that I have, is lack of access. So, I left three messages for Mr. Sabah, and Mr. Sabah unfortunately did not respond. After that, he lets, I believe, Rick returns my call. I did not ask for Rick, I asked for Mr. Sabah. And then, obviously, no resolution. I escalate my message to Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor did not respond to my message either. So, I was just frustrated. So, I come to the city trying to get my money back, my eighty dollars, and then I get defensive, aggressive attitude from the ladies at the counter. The one lady, you know, was talking to me, I tried to tell her, you know, "You guys gave me the permit, so I need my money back if it's not allowed based on our ordinance." Then, the second lady next to her tries to interfere in the discussion, which I thought that was very unprofessional. My question still is the same: are wood-burning stoves allowed in garages or not? If they are not, why was I given a permit? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
The wood-burning stove that the gentleman had, he had it, like he said, for four or five years with no permit. Eventually, the ordinance caught up to it, and they gave him a violation to come and get a permit. He applied for a permit, and it does say wood-burning on it, okay, which was issued by mistake. I sent Rick out there because I said, "Go make sure that it is wood-burning." He went, and he had a pamphlet with him where it shows wood-burning stoves are not permitted. And he gave it to him. He said, "This is not permitted." Stoves are, but not wood-burning. Now, the gentleman did call a couple of times. I was busy, so, you know, and I said, "Rick, could you talk to the gentleman and tell him that this is it, it's not allowed?" Now, he's talking about, he said he needs a refund. We went a little bit more, and we did issue the refund, authorized it, the full refund, okay, even though we did the inspection, because it was a mistake. And, that's the cause right there. But wood-burning stoves are not allowed in the city.
So, has he been given the refund already, or is it...
I already authorized it, yes.
So, when will, sure.
Thank you very much. The ladies were very aggressive responding to my concern when I went to get my money. They did not give me my money, and that's why I wanted, I went to the mayor, so I can escalate my response, and Mr. Mayor did not answer my concerns either, so that I'm still eighty dollars out.
Well, he authorized it. When will he get it?
And I apologize. What, what I found out was that it was being administrative, and you were getting a check. We do not go till the treasurer's not going to give you eighty dollars, so you've got to get a check.
Yes, it was. This is the procedure. If we have to refund, this is not the only time. Sometimes, you know, they overpay, or they pay twice, so we have to refund it. We do authorize the treasurer to issue an amount. Usually, we deduct the basic off of there and just refund the rest. We did not, in this case, says refund the total. But the gentleman, as I was told, I was not there. He, the girl, she says, "Either you give me my money right now, or I'm going to get my lawyer."
Okay, well, when can he expect his refund?
It's already, I mean, it's with the treasurer.
With the, so, okay.
It's already, it's been about a week ago that it was signed.
Will it be mailed to him, or does he pick it up?
It will be mailed to him, yes.
Okay, it'll be mailed.
I appreciate it. I just want to add that it took me six visits to the city. There's no access to leadership, no access to concerns of the residents, and it's not the first time I have this issue. I'm never able to get hold of him.
Okay.
But, just in all fairness, though, I'm listening to this, and I've dealt with, you know, engine, building and engineering department in my business. In all fairness, if, if one of his associates contacted you back, Rick in this case, who is very capable of handling this particular situation, I mean, I'll be honest with you, if everything was reversed, I'd have no problem with that.
And he was the one that did the inspection?
Right.